Got everybody in?
Got everybody in.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 24th, 2024 workshop meeting. We expect Deputy Mayor Woods to be joining us, but we do have quorum. And we don't want to keep folks waiting, so we'll, we'll go ahead and get started and she'll join us when she arrives. Announcements? Anyone have announcements? I would, I would just have one request from, from the village clerk. If you, I'm sorry, from the court clerk. If you have received a parking ticket, the venue for having discussions about the ticket is with the justice after you make your plea. The court clerk cannot resolve tickets without the justice, so simply return, mark either guilty or not guilty and proceed with justice. Okay, opportunity to request a vote to mod, add or modify an agenda item. I'd like to add two if people are comfortable. First is discussion of calendar for the rest of this month and for August. Make a motion to add that to the agenda. Okay, and the second is to appoint an alternative for the audit committee so that we have a backup on bill review. Make a motion to add that. Second, sound favor. All right, we have a guest with us this evening. Steve, it's Grivno, correct?
Uh, yes, Grivno, thank you.
Hi, Steve Grivno has a proposal for the village. I'm gonna turn the floor over to him and have him talk the trustees through it. Our, our attorney Jonathan DeJoy is with us this evening. We'll begin with you.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you for your time. I was hoping to be there in person, but something came up, so. I am a location scout. I'm working with Netflix and a production company for the upcoming film Knives Out, which it's the third film in the series. It's like a big Netflix franchise starring Daniel Craig, who's also James Bond. I don't, if, if, if some people have seen it, I don't expect everyone to, to be familiar, but it's like a big PG, PG 13 kind of a murder mystery movie series. And they're filming most everything in London, but there, there is a visual effects, we call it a plates unit, where we capture photographs and video of certain things that we want to input into the blue screens that um they've already filmed scenes on a, on a stage. So about eight months ago, they sent me to a bunch of towns all over the Northeast based on research that they had done. And they came out of the woodwork about a week ago and said, oh, hey, uh, we love Cold Spring. Can you help us connect with, with the town? To see if we can capture some of our digital plates there to put on some of these blue screens that they've done on stage. And I will confirm it as soon as I know. I don't think that it's supposed to play as Cold Spring, New York. I think it is supposed to be like a nondescript New England town, but I will confirm that.
That was one of my questions is, is it going to be identified as Cold Spring, New York? Cause we've got plenty of people arriving.
Yeah, so that, I know that I figured you would have that question and that is something I absolutely want to confirm. Just in regards to like what the, what, what the exact context is, cause I have not read the script. I don't know. I'm sure it's pretty heavily guarded, cause it's a, you know, it's a murder mystery and they don't want a lot of people to know what the, what the, 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 the solve to the mystery is. But I will try to find out and obviously in regards to any permissions that the town would grant, you know, I would defer to you in terms of whatever context you need to know in order to properly review this proposal ultimately.
So just for clarity, Steve, we are three municipalities, very tight cheek by jowl. Um, we are a village within the town of Phillips Town, so you would be making your application with the village of Cold Spring, not the town.
Understood. No, sorry, I apologize and thank you for clarifying. I think I've done, I've worked with Phillips Town for HBO, but I never worked with Cold Spring yet. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity.
Great, happy to have you.
And so in regards to the practical proposal of what we would like to do, I'm still learning all the details, but I think it, I think it will be fairly not very impactful, but I, you know, that's up to you to decide. I guess I'll just go in order of what we think we might wanna propose. And if you have any questions, just please interrupt me. So the first thing is on, right now we're aiming for there is a drone unit where they want to just get like an aerial establishing shot of the village from the Hudson and from a, and from various angles. Launching somewhere, launching the drone, that is with our vendor, who's like a professional drone vendor. They do this for all the big TV shows and movies. They, I've spoken with them already about the restricted airspace. That is above Cold Spring because of West Point and they have a lot of luck. They just flew it like Cape Canaveral, I think last week, so they've got good connections with government entities, but the drone vendor would, if possible, be procuring any permits to flock with the FAA to fly in any airspace. So that would never happen unless, you know, we propose our flight plan to the FAA and get a waiver and correspond with West Point to get permission. And that would all have to be done in advance for Cold Spring to potentially give us permission to literally launch the drone and, and get video of the village. For, uh, to be, uh, to be in the movie. So that is an ongoing thing that, um, you know, we, we don't have that permission yet, but I'll keep everybody in, in, informed. In regard, I don't wanna get speculate too much, but in regards to launching an actual drone. I don't know if there's, if you've ever had this done before, if there's a place that you propose, I was gonna propose maybe, you know, the park down by the water, uh, cause there's a lot of, it's a nice big space. They're aiming for Saturday, August 31st to do this work, just the drone stuff. Or maybe there's a bit, that big lawn at the Episcopal Church, which is kind of off Main Street. I don't know if we need to confirm, you know, where the drone would launch right now, but I'm just throwing out some ideas there.
So to, to, for you to take note. Are you talking about the, our dock? Are you talking about the, the large state park that's within our boundaries? Dockside, an open field area?
I was referring to dockside, like from the grass, which is where we usually do stuff like this, or a parking lot is where we usually do this kind of thing.
So we, this, this board also approves permitting at dockside for events and, and issues. So you're in the right place for that. The Episcopal Church is, is private property.
Right.
And you would need to work with their vestry where you to apply that. So, so that's mo, that's Labor Day weekend. How large a footprint would, would the drone launch? People on the ground and equipment, et cetera?
Um, I think I'll, I'll defer to the drone vendor and circle back, but usually when I see this type of thing, they put out safety cones and it's like, probably like 30 feet by 30 feet. And they kind of put just like a fabric, uh, kind of bullseye on the ground, which is like their launch, you know, home area and then have safety cones around it. They can do it from anywhere. They can do it from a parking lot. We, you know, if it's gonna be Labor Day weekend and you're expecting large, uh, you know, a lot of population to be at the park, which I would fully understand. Then, you know, we could absolutely seek private property to potentially do this from if public property might be too busy or problematic for any reason.
Go ahead. Mayor's Park, so you know, no parking in the area, but Mayor's Park is another one of our parks that's a little bit to the north.
Yep.
That one is just less busy with visitors.
It's the same view as dockside. It's just slightly further north.
Yeah, and honestly, you know, we could launch this thing from anywhere. It's, it's really just the, the, the point at which the drone would launch from and land at. So in terms of the view, it doesn't, you know, the, the view for that vantage point isn't important. It's, it's just a private space with enough kind of radius to safely have a drone go up and down.
That's, I think Laura's suggestion is, is strong for Labor Day. Tell us about vehicles accompanying the drone. I know that a drone is a small thing, but I'm thinking about crew and, and how many vehicles we would need to accommodate. The challenge of dockside is there is no parking, virtually no parking on lower Main Street.
Okay, yeah, that could be problematic then, cause usually to support drone launching for this type of a thing, we need to rig a, you know, our, our camera to it. So it's usually the drone guys have a sprinter van. And then there's the camera people would either have a sprinter van or like a 14 foot box truck. So I would imagine that wherever we do this from. And like I said, we can totally pursue private property if, if that's what has to happen at the end of the day. You, I think at least we would need access for a sprinter van and possibly a small, like a 14, 16 foot box truck.
Okay, so we, we do as part of the dockside use permit, we are able to permit vehicles to drive, to drive in and park during an event. But I was just trying to get a sense of how many we were talking about and then the crews all come in the sprinter van or they're coming in individual vehicles?
The crew would all come in individual vehicles. So we, it sounds like parking might be a thing on, on that particular.
The permit allows up to 10 vehicles, I believe. I have to confirm that, but I think.
All right. Could we give them access to the Hudson House?
We'd have to negotiate with Hudson House because they have the, they have the lease or the, or the boat, the boat club potentially.
Right.
So there, there are, as the trustees are pointing out, there are options that we can discuss that might make dockside more accessible. I think we have to think about a 30 by 30 foot footprint on a busy weekend. And to that point, Laura's recommendation makes more sense. So my point is it's not off the table. We just need to think through logistics. If, if Labor Day weekend is only the drone, that's more workable than all of the things that you wanted to do on Labor Day.
Absolutely. And, and another thing with, without getting too far into the weeds at this point is, you know, I know that getting down to dockside, you know, might take a little bit of time for somebody on foot or even for a vehicle to get all the way down there. If the production wants everything to be a little closer together, then, you know, they may ask myself or somebody doing locations works such as myself to also maybe even reach out to a private entity like the church or another parking lot or something that's maybe just right off of Main Street if they'll, if, if they would entertain us proposing a deal to them to rent that space and, and ensure the property and all of that stuff. So, but it's, right, right now, I guess I'm just, you know, trying to put feelers out for options, but I think that it sounds very encouraging, so I, I'm, I'm, I can move on to the other requests. For now, so let's see, the other thing I know that they will want to be try to do is to get just still photographs with like a regular old camera and also with our movie camera, get some video of some of the shops along Main Street, definitely Cold Spring Pizza, which I've spoken to the owner. He is happy to work with us. I guess in the movie, there is a pizza shop on Main Street that they built on a stage that we would get some shots of Cold Spring Pizza from various angles. And then in the post-production, they would like make it look like a different pizza parlor with, you know, movie magic visual effects. That's a kind of a thing that we would discuss with Cold Spring Pizza about, but in terms of the village. This is like probably five to 10 people, a tripod and a camera setting up in various angles to just get shots of some of the shops and some of the scenery on Main Street, anything that we would capture with the camera. We have no intention of capturing any people. Usually we would just let them walk, let them walk, just let it live as we say. And when there's a, you know, a few seconds where we don't have people or our intention is not to film anybody really. So we're just gonna catch as catch can in terms of getting footage of some of these shops and anything that we would be featuring. You know, myself or another locations person would talk to them about signing a photo release to say that, you know, that they're okay with the image of their shop, you know, being used in the film and portrayed in the film. That's a standard practice that we do for any, anybody, any person or any a business or entity that is featured or captured with our camera for the purpose of commercial use. We approach them to see if they would sign a piece of paper to be in agreement with us. And I, you know, they're gonna try to get everything from like the sidewalks and stuff. We, we have no intention of like bottlenecking any foot traffic or rerouting or stopping any foot traffic. I think we're just gonna catch as catch can, leave, leave adequate walking lanes for everything. In the event that they wanted to, that they say, hey, the only way we can get this one particular shot we need is like to have the tripod in the street or in the median or something like that. Then we would absolutely propose that plan to the village and the police to review it to see if it's possible and find out if there's a way depending on where the, you know, at police discretion, at the village discretion. Let us know if the placement, and maybe it's just the thing where we're there on the day and we say, can we put it here? Can we put it here? We put it, can we pop out and put it down for one minute and stop traffic with a couple of police? Obviously we pay for the police and everything would be at their discretion. To say, can we intermittently stop vehicle traffic or do it on a light or something for a few minutes at a time? Basically, we wouldn't do anything that anyone would say no to if they say, nah, that's, that's too complicated. We wouldn't do it.
So before you go on in the conversation, can we confirm you and I spoke by phone? And you initially put forward Labor Day for everything. But then when I pointed out how challenging that is, you spoke with folks on your team in London and it sounds like what they're proposing is drone on Labor Day and what's the second date that you're proposing for the other shots?
That's correct. Thank you. I got ahead of myself.
That's okay.
So drone, drone only on Labor Day weekend. They're aiming for Saturday, August 31. Any of the plates work that I'm talking about now would be the following weekend, which I believe is September 7 and 8. Saturday and Sunday, September 7 and September 8.
And would it be two days of filming?
Possibly. It, it might be one depending on the scope and the amount of things that they wanna do. There's some other things that might just end up in another town. We're trying to keep it all in the village of Cold Spring just for simplicity, but the way these things go is sometimes there's another thing that the direct director likes something else, somewhere else, and then the, the work moves away. And then it's only, now we only have a day of work or a half a day of work. But on the larger end, it would be September 7 and 8. On the shorter end, it would be one of those days.
And do you have start and stop times, personally?
Um, so everything right now is daylight dependent as far as I know. I don't think anything would be at an odd hour. I think everything could be within business hours. I am, I, I believe that there are general guidelines in Village of Cold Spring, right? I think nothing before 8 AM or something like that. Nothing after nine. Does that sound, is that? Okay.
On the weekends, yeah.
Yeah, everything would be within those hours in the event we wanted to land any vehicles and start setting stuff up before then. You know, we would put that proposal before you as a request. I don't see that being a deal breaker at all. I, uh, I think, I think probably if, if you needed it to be, I think everything would be between the hours of 8 AM and 9 PM. I know, yeah, I don't see why anything would need to be before that. Unless for some strange reason, they say, oh, we gotta get this at sunrise. And I, I don't know what time that is right now on that day, but I haven't heard that yet. I'm just, you know, thinking of past experiences where the director has a weird dream and wakes up and goes, it has to be at sunrise. Can we do it? And then it makes a new request, but right now I think everything would be between 8 AM and 9 PM. I did have in the proposal something about a piece of scenery, like a, you know, like a fake wall or something that we would wanna put somewhere to get a shot through. That would be like a wall of this pizzeria that they built on a stage. I'm told that has gone away, so it's a good thing. There's less, less stuff. No, currently there is no piece of scenery. No, no fake wall or fake window that we'd wanna put anywhere. As far as I'm told right now, it's all just camera on a tripod stuff. Let's see, what else is there? I'm looking at my letter, which I
You had a car shot at one point, Ben Lovmon's car driving down a street?
Yeah, I don't know what kind of car it is. I'm sure it's super cool, but there, there is a theoretically, they would transport the car that Daniel Craig's character drives in the movie usually would come on, you know, those things, uh, if it's registered to drive, then hopefully it could just drive up. A lot of times it's, they say it will be and then it ends up not being registered to actually drive. So it has to be transported on like a car mover and I'd have to figure that like a, a proper place to land that, cause sometimes it can be like a little, like a trailer that it comes in on. I have to confirm all those details, but the shot is a car driving on some to be determined street. They say somewhat, something around. I don't think it's on Main Street. They seem to think it might be somewhere nearby Main Street of a, they were like, well, I think we could just put a tripod in the sidewalk, on the sidewalk and have the car drive. They say it'll, they say it'll be registered. I'm waiting to confirm that. And it would just drive with the normal rules of the road, just as, you know, obeying all the laws of the road like a normal car and that we would just roll and get the shot. Now that's the easy version. The more complicated version is if they said, can we actually have control of that one block intermittently to block it off for the minute or two at a time that we, it takes to do that shot? Uh, cause we want the camera in the street and the car is actually not registered. That happens all the time. So I'm waiting to hear about that. I would imagine, you know, we couldn't do that on a very busy street. And I'd have to propose, I'd have to show them photographs of a bunch of different streets, have them pick one and then find out if it's possible or not.
Do we get Daniel Craig driving the car or just the car?
No, you get it, you get, you get, you get, you get, you get the stunt double, you get the stunt.
Even more exciting, okay.
You get, you get John, John Craig or something, but you, I wish, I wish you got Daniel Craig. I, I think he lives in New York City, so, but I don't think he's gonna pop up. Yeah, no actors, I'm told, just, uh, just the, the, the double who'd be driving the car. That's the driving shot. There is another driving shot that they think will not actually be in Cold Spring. Of, uh, it's a, it's a more complicated one where we would, we would attach a camera to a car and drive it. Um, usually it, it would be attached to like, they probably filmed a car on a stage with a, a guy, you know, Daniel Craig driving it and there's a blue screen in the background. And they would need to put a camera on the hood to film going through the windshield to, to get like some scenery that they would put, then put on the blue screen. They think it's probably gonna be in a wooded area that was probably gonna be outside of the village. I have to confirm that. But in, in the event that it would fall within your jurisdiction. Usually what that requires to pull off is police assistance. That would be either leading or following a, usually like a three-vehicle convoy. That's like a car with, a, a car with a camera on it or a car. It's usually like a car, a car and a van and a police officer or a police officer and a car, a car and a van at, driving in a circle in a, in a, in a loop and just capturing that same thing over and over again and it, and with a police escort. And it usually doesn't require shutting down any streets or anything like that, but, um, it requires like a parking lot to rig the camera in, so I, we're probably gonna be renting some parking lot, making a deal with somebody somewhere nearby to have our base camp, so to speak, where we're gonna be like rigging any driving shots or things like that.
And when do you, you, there are a lot of things that you don't know yet that are still being considered. When do you, cause we're not far from September 7th, actually. When do you expect that these things will iron out? So that we, we understand better what the, what the needs are.
Well, I, I will say this, I think that it would help, it, it always, always movie, movie and TV and movie people will always take longer to make a decision than, than you like. So I usually ask as a location manager, I ask the, you know, the town, the village, the entity to, you know, if they can, give me a deadline. And that way I can really put pressure on my team to say, we gotta know this stuff by this time or we may not get it. Because if they think they, if they don't hear about deadlines or they think they have time, they'll keep changing their mind. They'll, you know, I think it would help between you and I, it would help to, um, if you could provide me with some kind of a deadline or like time structure that I can get, I can bother my people to get you as much, uh, you know, the information that you require in advance. And I'm happy to do, put in a placeholder application and start working on insurance and, uh, you know, any accounting for permit fees and all that stuff, just to smooth out all the paperwork. If any, I don't know if any, you know, if any attorneys on our end got, you know, need to look, they usually do need to look at the, like the application to see if there's any language that they request to change. Sometimes the village says, we can't change any language. This is all, you know, sign it or don't, and we're used to that. So yeah, I would like to get like as much of the formal paperwork moving as I can, just to be out in front of it.
So we, we need to discuss as a board with that date, but I would say whatever date you land on. We need, we have a part-time police department and so scheduling officers needs to happen sooner rather than later. So I think the latest that we could go might be the 21st of August. Or I don't know how others feel about that.
That's, that seems really late for scheduling officers. I, I mean, I would say, what?
How many, how many years?
That gives us a week and a half.
No, it's two, it's two and a half weeks.
Well, if the 30th, 31st. Yeah, yeah, so. I think the 14th have applications in and give approval by then.
Right, because you're thinking about the drone and the
Right, I mean, if we could get an application submitted by the 7th and then have the board time to review it, details, ask for details and, and specifications and then have it all nailed down by the 14th. I think that would give our police department a ton.
Yeah, we need to, everything needs to be reviewed by the, by the officer in charge. And I mean, we've, we've done, we have done large productions like this in the village before and been able to make them work. So I feel confident we can make things work. It's just a matter of making sure that we have enough, enough time to plan on our end as well.
Sure, no, this, I, I like to hear this. I mean, uh, I, I'm, I would be more than happy to tell my people that, you know, we need to have the, uh, all the details by the 7th. And, you know, I, I would tell them that, you know, I will hope that they would have all the details and that we could submit an application by the 7th so that it could properly be reviewed by the 14th, um, which would hopefully give us all a, a good amount of time to make this happen. And yeah, I think that's it. That's, that's a good amount of like pressure to put on, on, on my people. So I, I'll totally run with, with a, with a application by the 7th for review by the 14th. I'm more than happy to do it and see, see what they can come up with.
Okay, and I mentioned to you by phone that we do have scheduled a boat dock in Cold Spring on the 7th. It's got a 400 person maximum. We don't know how many people are gonna be on the boat at this point, that they're still selling tickets, but it could be up to 400 people.
Okay.
You're here between between 11 and three-ish, four-ish. At least 11 and four, 11 and four. So at, right at the center of the day, there are, it's a larger amount of people in the village. They are arriving by boat, not car, so you know, that's a plus, but there are quite a lot of people on Main Street in that period. I don't know how that plays into your You know, that's a plus, but there are quite a lot of people on Main Street in that period, I don't know how that plays into your thinking.
Okay, and, and, uh, you said, but, uh, uh, between eleven AM and four PM approximately.
Disembark at eleven and, and reembark at four.
Got it, okay, um, that, that's incredibly helpful information to have, um, let, let me, uh, let me. Shop that back to these guys, and I'm sure that would, might make them wanna schedule anything in Cold Spring for the, for the eighth, um, I would imagine.
Or, 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 or around it, you know, earlier in the day.
Yeah, or just to say, okay, well. Just to say, hey, you know, you're gonna have to be working with a lot more people, I, I, I think that they would try to avoid it, I don't think it's a deal breaker, um, but. Yeah, I mean, depending on what we need to do, we might be able to get everything before eleven and after four, anyway. Also, I will say that a lot of this stuff, and I need to go, I'm gonna go to Cold Spring and just do another survey and just take photographs. Um, on Monday or Tuesday, um, because a lot of this stuff, it comes down to this, where the sun it actually is, because they go. Oh, cool, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna get all these shots, and then I have, you know, I'm gonna get out in front of it, because I've been doing this long enough to. Tell the director of photography, well, the sun rises over here, and it, and, and it's, you know, it's at the top of the sky at this time, and it sets over there. And that sometimes will inform, um, when they actually want to do some of these, uh, shots. So, I'm trying to get out in front of that as well, because that. I, I, I hate it when it comes down to the last minute where they go, cool, we have a plan, and then the, the camera person goes. But the sun's not gonna be good that time, so I'm gonna get out, I'm gonna figure that out in advance.
Awesome.
Um, let's see, what else? There was. And then there, I had put that there are some establishing shots of, um, a house or a, a house or two. Um, I, they're pretty sure that that's gonna be outside of, of Cold Spring, and this is just like. A tripod outside of a, probably on private property, a tripod with a camera on it, outside of a house, getting a shot of the house. Um. So, that I don't think is, I don't think would be impactful to Main Street or anything like that, I don't even think it's going to be in Cold Spring. But I did put it on the letter, um, just in case you were curious about that one. Um, and then I. Based on my experience, I've been doing a lot more of these plate units, so just, uh, quote unquote, in the last couple of years. Um, and they usually on the high end will be thirty people, about thirty crew. Um, with. Usually like one or two small box trucks. Uh, and probably a van as their equipment vehicles, and then anyone who drives any passenger vehicles. Usually will just park as available, like they're just a normal person who has to find parking somehow. Um, or we rent a lot, a private lot for, for the passenger vehicles. Um, on the low end, this stuff can sometimes, it can be ten or fifteen people with. One van or one small box truck, um, I. I would like to prepare for the higher end of it, just because I, it's easier to shrink than to get bigger. Um, so I would, like, yeah, I, I think, I would anticipate our application. That we would submit by the seventh at the latest, um, would have approximately thirty, thirty crew members. And probably two small box trucks and a Sprinter van, plus, uh, passenger vehicles, and. In the event that they ask, and I will, you know, put it on the application for review. Um, sometimes they ask, can we land these vehicles, can we have a half a block of parking? Um, or at least, or just sufficient parking for these vehicles on Main Street and just unload right there. Um, I don't know what the answer would, that would be, but that might be something we would ask for, um, for, uh, review and approval.
Um, we, we don't have a whole lot of parking in, in Cold Spring.
No, I know, and it's pretty.
municipal lot, um, that might be a, a more appropriate place, on Main Street on a weekend, it's like insane.
Yeah.
That might be a challenging request.
And I'll tell them, don't, you know, if, if that's what you're gonna ask for, don't hold your breath for that one, um. And I'll have backups if, if that's what they wanna do, but part of my going up there on Monday or Tuesday is also to survey the parking. And start to find out how we can be the least amount impactful with our, with any vehicles.
Okay.
Um, and I think. I, I, I think those are all the potential things that we would request that I, that I currently know about. Um, I think that's all, I think that's all I have for now, unless I'm missing something. I don't think.
For. Two D from, from board members.
Just to clarify, uh, we're talking about two to three days of shooting, Saturday, August thirty-first for the drone shots. September seventh and eighth, potentially for the plates and for the car shot, is that correct? Or would the car shot be another day?
Um, the car, the car shot would be the September seven or September eight.
Okay, so concentrating it all on that weekend, right?
Yeah, ev- everything, um, the, only the drone on Saturday, August thirty-one. And any other driving or camera on tripod plate shots would be, um, September seven. Or eighth, or both days, depending on how much work they. Uh, ultimately want to try to do. And is, is, is the application on the website, is that, um?
Is the filming, the filming isn't? Bert says no, but Jeff can get it, and Greg can get it.
Okay, great.
Sorry. Just out of curiosity, um, is it possible for this to be on a weekday, or, or there is some particular reason why you're on the performing?
Uh, it's a great question, um, I was wondering the same thing myself, my, my understanding is that the person who is. The camera, the camera guy, um, that he is currently, uh, uh. Shooting Poker Face Season Two, which was based up in the Hudson Valley, uh, I think a, a year or two ago, and is now in the city, so he's. The, the guy, the, the camera person is, is working on the weekdays, but let me, I mean, I'm happy to ask them if it can be on a weekday. Um, they've only been discussing weekends with me, which makes me think that they're taking crew from a working show that works on all the weekdays. Right now, and that those people are only available on the weekend, but, um, it's a good question, and, and I'll ask it. Just to, to give you, you know, to, to clarify, to clarify with you.
Great, thanks. No, I'll just wait to see what you propose, but we have all the information, I mean, at least the beginning of what your plan is, so.
Okay. Yeah, and then, um, wh- whenever Greg can send me the application, I can send it to, um, our legal to review and get out in front of that. Um, and I, I think that's all I have, and I, I hope, um, you know, thank you for your time and for listening, and I hope I didn't, that didn't take too long.
Thank you, your, your job is very cool.
It's cool when I have enough time.
Yeah, well, there's that. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Um, I would like to make a motion to enter, um, a session with our attorney to. We're gonna shut the recording and then we'll come back. Okay, so it is, uh, now just about eight o'clock, um. We were in executive session to seek advice of counsel, I made. A motion to exit executive session, trustee Starbuck seconded, and we voted in favor to come out, so here we are, returned to public session. And we're moving on to board business. Um, approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five village liability insurance proposal, Laura, you had some questions, were they addressed to your satisfaction?
Um, my main question was about, um, the, our dams not being in, uh. And my understanding is that in order for, for them to be considered for the umbrella policy, we have to submit some paperwork to the insurance carrier. Um, for their review, so I guess my question, I, I know that it's due. Do we have a, can that be added, do you know?
It, we could, we could add it under the umbrella policy.
My sense is, the umbrella policy, right now it's, it's million, it's a million dollar policy, the umbrella policy gets us to three million. And the cost of. The dam is so far beyond three million, and at this point, the only way that we can come into compliance. By our carriers' standards to qualify for insurance on the dam is to meet the required. Repairs by the DEC, so basically, we have to fix the dam before we can get.
I thought it was that we had to submit the letter, ex, like in response to DEC's issuance of. Is that your understanding, that?
Formal response, I understood that to be remediation.
I'm not sure.
Not just response to the, hey, these are the issues.
I'm not sure, so I know that we had submitted, we had submitted, we had to submit a letter to DEC saying what were we going to do to come into compliance. So what's not clear to me is, do they wanna, do they want the compliance, or do they just want the letter that we sent?
Uh, I believe they want compliance, I can confirm with Karen, but.
Okay, I also sent an email to Mark, that's electronic, and okay, that language and asked, do we have this? Because he seems to know where all of our documents are on the dam, and, you know, he, he's been a really good resource, so. Maybe between those two things, we could figure out, is this in the realm of capital? The generalities, I think it's worth, oh, doing, and if not, then we just. Plug away as we are.
But as the, as the policy stands today.
So, so. We could agree to approve pending confirmation of your question, did you have another question?
Um, not a question so much of the kind of. Having been on this committee before, when this, when the issuance of this comes up, yeah, and I. I'm not as deep into the dams and. As you guys have been, so maybe my information is outdated or incorrect, but I feel like the issue was. The sort of chicken egg situation of this, because we don't have. The money that it would take to be in compliance, therefore. Having it, right, having it be part of our insurance would make zero sense, it'd be like insuring, you know, like. A burning, basically, which is the building that we, yeah, that's where we are, we are in the burning building, so. That's my only, this more of a comment, it's not a question, but something to.
I guess the question, trustee Bozzi is, is there a difference between a million dollars worth of liability coverage and a three million dollar? Liability coverage if a catastrophic event were to happen with the dam?
I think it's worth asking a question.
I, I can definitely ask the question for compliance reasons, but.
But I'm mindful too that we have a policy that is expiring, and so we need tonight. To come to an agreement on the overall policy minus this one question that we want. I'm comfortable with that, okay, so this, this is just a, this is just a vote, yeah, so would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, I make motion to, um, approve the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five village insurance proposal. Um, with the, um, pending, um, under, uh, you know, further information about. On the, the dams coming up to the.
Favor, hi, hi, so you'll, you'll talk to Karen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, now we move to Rec and Lillian is here, um. So, we have. Lillian has not, one of the documents needs to have her complete the paperwork, but she has done the review, so let's go one by one. Bucci, what, did ask for doc side, they.
Did ask for doc side when she found out that the bandstand was another option, because she was concerned about weather. So I had told her that we had another application pending, that the person applied for doc side, and she applied for the bandstand at the same time. So if there was a rain condition.
Yeah.
They could just move instead of being a doc side, they can move to the bandstand, she's like, oh, we didn't know the bandstand was an option, she went back and she talked to the bride and the groom, and the bride and the groom was. Much more happier with the bandstand than with doc side, so that's why, so she pulled her doc side application, filled out the bandstand application. And, um, submitted the insurance, I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, so I can't answer this question. I, um, she did send in the money.
Well, it's not indicated on the application, that's why I wanted to ask, I think.
Well, this is another problem that we were having, um, I know she sent the money in. Yes, I have paid, I paid a fee, I paid a fee for three hundred dollars for the use of the doc side parts. Um, I may have made this fee over the, over to this, she wanted to move her doc side application and closes the two hundred dollar difference. So I don't know why, oh, bandstand is, because it's a five hundred dollar fee, since she's not a villager, she's a non-resident.
Right.
So she had submitted three hundred dollars, she submitted two hundred dollars. Um, why the check numbers aren't on here, I forgot the answer.
Okay, so that, we need, that needs to be, i- if we approve this, it needs to be pending, um, documentation of the checks.
Um. Right, I mean, she does have the check number, she does have the check number for the one that she, um. The three hundred dollar one is on here, so we just make sure that that.
It is a non-boat Saturday, it's fifty people, non-boat Saturday. Here, and here's the other one, so you can talk to us about them. Um, thank you very much. So, um, we'll make a motion to approve the, the wedding, exchange of wedding vows, um, requested by Renee Bucci. Um, September twenty-first from three to four-thirty, um, pending confirmation of payment of fees. Second, favor, and Lillian, you said you have the, you had the insurance, et cetera, I just did not check it on that.
Yes, insurance should be.
Okay, we just need to go back there and make sure that.
Well, I'm not getting, I'm not, when the stuff is getting scanned to me, I'm not getting full copies.
Okay.
So that's one of the, so.
All right, let's talk about that. I mean, make sure you have what you need, at least. Okay, next is, holy, this is the kiddo birthday party. Um. It looks like everything has come in that needed to come in, it's already been approved by Rec. Um, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the birthday party, um, by applicant Bill Fuglius for July twenty-seventh. In Mayor's Park Pavilion from ten AM to three PM.
Second? I'll second. Now, the next one is the firehouse request, and I'm a little confused about this because. It says South Pavilion, but then our agenda, it says McConville Park.
Right, this is from Mayor's Park, I, he checked off, no, we didn't check off the wrong box. It says site requested. Mayor Park Pavilion.
Okay, so the agenda is just have it listed, okay, we need to do it, just, when we do the minutes, correct that.
South of Pavilion, I think he means east of Pavilion.
Wow, okay.
I think he got his name, because the river runs north and south.
They wanna be on the riverside of the Pavilion.
No, I think they wanna be on, I think the bouncy houses are gonna be on the other side of the plan.
On the street side.
Those are the fair street, because they need power to.
Okay.
Okay. Um. I just finished vetting this this morning.
Okay, and?
Everyone, highways, ED, FD came back, I never get an answer from EMS. Um, I think he reads it and doesn't think he needs to respond back.
Okay.
Um.
No, take them.
Yes, and good enforcement was not needed, if there was nothing.
We're not doing any tents, basically, ten by ten, okay, and so you, we have the application, you've had, you've gotten the fee, the deposit, insurance, all that stuff?
Well, um, Rec, Rec recommended waive your, waive the fee for the fire. Um, Rec could not sign off on this, the Rec chair could not sign off on this, because he is a member of the fire department.
Okay.
I can't sign off on this, because I'm a member of the fire department.
So the first question is, how do the trustees feel about the request of the fire company and the rec commission, I'm sorry, the request of the rec commission to waive the fee, I'm comfortable with that.
Rec, Rec had a quorum that night, unfortunately, two of the members of the quorum were members of fire department.
Okay. Unfortunately, that's.
Typically, typically engaged members, indeed, okay, so we have agreed to that, um, would someone like to make a motion regarding the event? Typically, specifically engaged members, indeed. Okay, so we've agreed to that. Um, would someone like to make a motion regarding the event?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve Family Day, uh, August tenth from eleven AM to seven PM. At Mayor's Park Pavilion, on the east of the Pavilion.
That's good.
And to waive the fee. And to waive the fee.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Great, and thank you guys, well, of course, you're aware that it's just, it's just the little doors, that the, the bouncy houses have to get in.
The rec chair is the, um, person handling this event, so he is quite aware of.
All right, on the season. Um, few, that's an update. I'm in your packet, I think Greg replaced, I went through, I went through. Uh, the West Point calendar, the Haldane calendar, um, and. Uh, obviously the, the parade, the, last year we had a perfect storm of Family Day, homecoming and. Parade all being on the same date. This year they are all different weekends, so we're good in that sense. Um, the eleventh, the eleventh and twelfth is West Point Family Weekend. That tends to be pretty intense. Um, so I wanted to have a conversation about that and, and. I am, I'm concerned about having a boat on that weekend because we get so many people by, by car that weekend already. Does anybody else share that concern?
Yeah, I mean, well, the West Point piece is a, is a new, that's a wrinkle with the, with the boat.
Well, it's, it's been.
Drive, but they do drive here usually.
It's, it's that, not that it's a new wrinkle. They've always, we've always had overlap with boat and West Point. This year, we're. Trying to think ahead a little bit and say, is it, is it an impact that we're concerned about?
Right, yeah, I think the answer for me anyway is yes, because as I recall, it was exceptionally.
I'm not concerned about Friday, because Friday the boat comes and goes before people are in the dinner floor, right? It's still the same time, three to, yeah, it's. Uh, eleven to four, no matter which day. So I'm not so concerned about Friday. It's the Saturday that, that I'm concerned about.
I feel like we do, I mean, it's consistent with what's happened in past years, and I think that. Our limit of keeping the boats. That, there was that request too. So they also asked that we raise the number of people allowed on the boat. I think especially in these busy event weekends or days, keeping that limit to four hundred is necessary.
Did they ask specifically for these weekends or just?
In general, they, you know, in order to make this a viable business model that they continue with. That they requested that we consider raising our number. It's totally up to us, of course.
I don't remember what, how many he requested.
He requested six hundred, but he would be happy with five hundred or any number over four hundred, really. So, um, again, it's up to the board to discuss. But I think especially with that West Point Family Saturday, Saturdays are really the busiest day on Main Street. So maybe we could give him wiggle room on the Fridays. Um, that aren't. Yeah, and we could consider Sundays if the board is willing, but I think maybe Saturdays, we keep it at four hundred.
So another variable here to throw in the mix is, um. I did speak with, um, the Garrison Command at West Point regarding their dock and the possibility of docking there. It is not an issue of repairs, as James reported. Um, it is that, um, their real property department is negotiating with C Street. For different pricing table there, yeah, for fees there.
Because they were not being charged at all.
Yeah.
Dock at West Point. So, so they were saving money by docking at West Point, but now they may not be saving money to dock at West Point.
Um, however. Um. The impact of them parking, the West Point dock, if you haven't been there, is down below the buildings, the main buildings. It is a commercial dock, it's built for, for big boats, um, and it doesn't block anybody's view. Um. I would prefer, prefer that they do dock at West Point. Um.
Just know what they, their fees are, right?
Well, that's not, I mean, I'm, I'm saying in terms of impact on the village, the more we can get them at West Point, that, that's the better.
But, but they may come back and say, well, now it costs us a lot more to dock at West Point.
Well, let them come back and say that, though. Let's, let's put it forward. I would say, take the position that you're docking at West Point, sort it out and let us know. I, I guess what I'm, what I'd like to get to tonight is, um, con- concurrence on the dates. And the capacity, throw it back to what, to, to C Street and say, so let us know how it's going with West Point. And, and then we can approve the dates. Let us know what docking capacity you've been able to secure at West Point. Because, you know, I, I honest, part, part, part of me feels like we, there wasn't entirely honest. Um, negotiation, right? Kept saying that he was being told it was a, it was a structure problem. It's not a structure problem, it was a contract problem.
Um, to go back to the dates for a second, so, um. What, on the October twenty-sixth, what time is, does the parade start?
They usually gather at four and step off at five, so the boat's out of town by the time the parade comes. And how, the Haldane Homecoming is the weekend before, so thank God we're not in that situation. I'm okay with the dates and, um. I even think I'm okay with the West Point weekend. That doesn't worry me as much as, um. I don't like the idea of adding more people. So I think that we, like, come to some level of. Of like, understanding of, for residents with, with the C Street, that's part of, like, us saying, we, let's keep it at four hundred.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Um, so, it's, so you would, does everyone concur with Laura? That, o- okay to proceed on the twelve? On the Saturday?
Yeah.
And I don't see any other reason for any of the other dates to not accept. Parents?
Yeah, I agree with the schedule as proposed.
Okay, and so, so now the next step is to go back and tell, let James know we've approved the, the schedule. Well, first, I would make a motion to, to, um, accept the C Street schedule for twenty-two, four as proposed. All favor?
Hi.
Boy, I'd like to go back and tell James that we've accepted the schedule, but we want to have further conversations about docked versus undocked. And the number stays, and the number stays the same. Cool?
Definitely.
Um, minutes. I didn't actually, were there minutes? So, strike item five, um, approval of bills. Um, oh, you wanted to add, you got a couple items to add, including. Yeah, we can do, we can do bills and all, and then I'll add it.
Um, all right, I make a motion to approve batch number seven, four, four, zero. For the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred ninety-three and twelve cents.
Second, all favor?
Bye.
Hi. You, okay, and then the add-on items were, um, trustee, trustee Starbuck. Sorry, trustee Frymark, um, has ended up traveling more for his work than he expected to be. Um, and there have been a number of occasions where he is not able to do the audit committee work of coming in and reviewing the bills and signing. Um, I have been able to back him up, but that is not something that should happen on the regular because Greg and I sign the checks. So, um, I would like to make a motion to appoint Tweeps as the alternate for the audit committee, so that we have someone else in place. If Aaron is not able to make it.
That's good.
All in favor?
You too, Will.
Are you, are you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, and then the next item was going over calendar. Greg went through.
Thank you, everybody, for getting me your availability.
So, it's also, it's quite quiet right now, and we have, we have some work to do to get ordinances ready for votes. So I'm away next week, so I propose no meeting on the thirty-first. Um, and then we have quorum on the seventh and the fourteenth. Um, I don't know. What, um. When will be ready to distribute the drafts that need to be distributed for board review? So I would say, my, my recommendation is that we. Call the twenty-first and twenty-eighth tentative until we have an agenda formed. We have quorum on all those days.
The twenty-first, the twenty.
It'd be more likely to cancel the twenty-eighth, because that's the one that I may need to be away. Sorry. I mean, I'm, I'm not here for the, for the fourteen. Right, so, but we do have quorum on those days. So I'm, I'm saying cancel next week, meeting on the seventh and the fourteenth, and then we'll see where we are in terms of agenda needs and business needs. We're gonna, there'll be bills to pay at some point, but if it's just, you know, if it's a quiet time and we can do a business meeting during the day to approve bills. Um, car. Okay. Um. Okay, so that's one good, okay, great. All right, um. Say that again?
No meeting next week.
No meeting next week. Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thanks a lot, Lillian.
Just like saying Robert.